Good afternoon, everybody. We're here to start off with some proclamations. I do want to mention that earlier today, I went out to the Apples for Children. And Apples is an acronym. It stands for Alliance for Parent Provider and Local Employer Solutions. And declared this week, the Week of the Young Child. And other two county commissioners were there. And I think all the other mayors from Washington County, except one. So if you're not aware of that organization, please check them out. We actually declared it the Year of the Early Child because unfortunately, Washington County is now ranked the lowest in the state for kindergarten preparedness. So we have a lot of work cut out for us in our community. And just wanted to raise everybody's awareness about that. And to get engaged with early childhood education. And now, we are here to proclaim it National Poetry and Jazz Appreciation Month. And at this time, I would like to invite from the Barbara Ingraham School for the Arts, Ms. Brianna Myers and Cameron Groch forward. How you guys doing? I'm going to read this proclamation to declare National Poetry and Jazz Appreciation Month. And then these young ladies are going to share some of their poetry with us. So whereas National Poetry Month, held every April, is a month-long national celebration of poetry established in 1996 by the Academy of American Poets. You guys weren't even born then, were you? Whereas National Poetry Month was inspired by Black History Month in February and Women's History Month in March, and aims to highlight the legacy and achievements of American poets. Introduce the public to the joy of reading and hearing poetry. Advocate for poetry to become a part of the school curriculum. Increase recognition of poetry and generate philanthropic resources for poets and poetry. And whereas each year publishers, booksellers, educators, and literary organizations use April to promote poetry. And whereas jazz is complementary to poetry and is an American original art form that affirms the noblest aspirations of our national character, individual discipline, perseverance, and innovation. And whereas jazz has produced some of America's leading creative artists and ranks as one of America's greatest exports to the world. Now therefore, with the support of the City Council, I, David S. Geisberts, the Mayor of the Hagerstown -- City of Hagerstown, do hereby recognize the month of April 2014 as National Poetry and Jazz Appreciation Month in Hagerstown, Maryland. So I am going to present this to you guys. And you can take that back to your school and share it with your friends. You can set it here in the meantime. And then I'm going to take a seat -- oh, a photo. And then I'm going to take a seat and listen.
All right, one, three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
And if you haven't liked the City of Hagerstown on Facebook, just a shout out. You can like us. And take it away, ladies.
Hi. So my name's Brianna Myers from Barbara Ingraham School for the Arts. I'm a sophomore. First, before we do any poetry, I'm going to let you guys know that we are having a poetry reading on April 22nd at 6:30 in the Black Box Theater. It is free admission. However, there might be a bake sale. We make very good cookies and brownies. Very good. I recommend that you all come. We will all be reading original poetry. And every single student, I think, will be involved.
Can you say when it is and where again?
It will be April 22nd at 6:30 in the Black Box Theater of Barbara Ingraham.
So we'll try to end our meeting before 6:30 so we can come over.
That'd be nice. I'd appreciate that. There's your poem. The first poem that I'm going to read, because it's going to go me, Cameron, me, is called "The Dance." And back in February, we were preparing for a love poetry reading. And so we were kind of writing a lot of love poetry. And so I wrote a piece, and then we workshopped it. And here's my piece. "The Dance." "A perfect silence hangs, like a pressed dress from his upturned lips. I glance away, still unable to meet his eyes, a pair so similar to mine. 'Well,' he says, tugging my irises to his where they stand alone, begging for me to join in the swirling twirl of a slow dance when you don't know how to waltz. I nod, and as the world spins lightly on its tiptoes, we simply sway."
My poem is "Letting Go." And it's a sustina, which is a form of poetry. And it was assignment that we had to do in class, where you have to take six N-words and then alternate it throughout the entire poem. "I used to watch her plump figure scurry about. My mother was never one for sitting. She used to touch me with gentle fingers, shaking with anticipation and brought a warm grin of love with her. She could lift the weight of living off my shoulders while I fiddled with her red necklace's gem. I suppose it couldn't last. She was a bird, always ready to take flight, and my father was never bird enough to understand her need to spread her wings. My mother would yell, and he would shout, and all I could see was the red gem swinging upon her breast, the gentle swish of repetitive movement. It gave me enough strength to lift my eyes and see that no one was wrong; only the warm feeling of needing to be right was to blame. So my mother's warmth left on a warm October day, and my genetic hand-me-down caused my hair to grow wings like a bird so it could try to chase after her. Blonde strands forming hands that looked hungerly towards the sky with a mere whisper of a breeze. Father would say, 'Your mother is going away for a little while.' And he'd pat my back and sew a quilt of gentle lies to assure a child that her mommy's just gone out to the store. Then I'd glance down at the red gem hung on a chain in my palm, left there after a quick kiss from red cherry lips. 'Mommy,' I'd mumble in bed at night, trying to be safe and warm on my own without her grin. I'd been told to fight with words and gentle fists, so I did. I fought my loneliness with silent whispers that flew like a bird from my lips, which died before it could fly out the window. My mother could no longer see me, watch me lift my own spirits without her shaky fingers. And before long, I could lift off with my new family and their love, dancing happily from it so that the red gem swung joyously from my growing heart. I began to grow, whispering, 'Mother,' to the sky when it began to blow the warm October air through my hair. I began to be my mother, a bird always on edge, misunderstood and alone, but always, always gentle. And so my father lost me another mother, and I, a gentle brother, as we moved. It became harder to lift my downy feathers every time he and I fought. I was a nuisance, a bird just like her, so why don't I have the decency to run? I clutched the red gem upon my neck, choking on the insoles linked upon the chain's metal edges, too warm on my throat. All I could see was loneliness and abandonment by my mother, my father, my brother. I saw Mother again in a dream as gentle as her shaky fingers, warm and beckoning me to lift off from the pain. With a red gem in my palm, I let go and truly became a bird."
So my second piece is called "Yore." You might know a similar poem by Sylvia Plath. It was actually an assignment to read that poem and realize that the person she was describing was described only with metaphors. And so it was an assignment to do the same thing with someone else who we knew. It could be someone we loved, someone we hate. We were preparing for love poetry. Someone I love. Sorry. So here it goes. "Yore." A question hiding behind my irises, peeking out through my pupils. A word I can't define even with a dictionary and a three-page equation that boils down to simply, 'Hi.' An undiscovered element that Mendeleev is holding a seat for on the table. The static on the telephone that always hangs on the edge of ending and a red rose just barely budding. The first person dashing to the finish line, the answer no one can find. And always, the post-it note brimming with scribbled-on secrets that you hurriedly rip and hide before walking away." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks for reading your poetry. Who's your favorite poet?
I think Robert Frost.
That was going to be what I said.
I mean, I don't know. I like a lot of them. Billy Collins writes a lot of really good things.
I'll have to check them out. I've never heard of them.
Wonderful. It's very readable, and it's really, really pretty.
Okay. Great. Well, thanks. Yes, take this and give it to Mr. Overmell, and he can display it in the school. Thank you. Indeed. Oh, and ladies, for your efforts, here's a lapel pin for you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
All right. It's always nice to get started with a little art. At this time, we're going to entertain a motion to go into special session to consider a resolution authorizing police operations support aids to act as enforcement officers for certain municipal infractions. Can I get a motion to go into executive session or a special session?
Don't move, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of going into special session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right. So before us, we have a motion. Someone would like to offer that motion?
Mayor, hereby moves for mayor council approval of a resolution authorizing part-time police operations support aids to some force. Section 173-30 entitled to prohibit smoking in city parks of the city code. Violations of this code are considered municipal infractions. Funding up to $10,000 will be from a vacant-funded position in the Parks Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion made by Mr. Metzner, seconded by Mr. Munson. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and resolution is approved. Thank you all for that. At this time, we'll adjourn our special session and go into our work session. And the first thing on our agenda is to present a special certificate of recognition to the Hagerstown Police Department Victim Witness Unit. So at this time, I'd like to invite everybody up. Come on in, Mr. Brubaker. And Chief Holtzman, do you want to introduce everybody with us here today?
Sure, I'll take a crack at it. Mr. Mayor, I have a unique privilege to introduce members of the Hagerstown Police Department's Victim Witness Unit. These are beginning with my mother here, which is very interesting to do and unique. But my mom started this unit in 1994 and has brought a great group along with her through the years. And this is just some of the members of the current unit. This is Nancy Rouse, Laura Menard, Jennifer Moss, and Deborah Brewer. Got that right. Behind them are Lieutenant Hurd and Sergeant Lehman. They run our criminal investigation unit. And pretty much any time when there's a significant event, it could be a death, typically it's an unexpected event where the police are involved, these ladies come out. And they take volunteerism to an extreme effort where they're on call 24 hours a day for us, come out in the middle of the night, and sit hours upon hours with victims' families and help make notifications with the police officers and allows us to free us up to do our investigations and the officers to get back on the street. Oftentimes, they'll sit for hours in the hospital with grieving parents and just be there with them. So they get -- last week, they received a governor's award for victim services. So we're very proud of that.
That's why we're here today.
And building on that, we've --
Absolutely.
-- council members have asked us to bring them down and get some recognition from the mayor and council.
Indeed. It's unfortunate that none of us, myself or members of the council, could make it to the affair down the road. But I understand that it was well-deserved, and that's why we wanted you to come here today and let us publicly thank you. So this is a certificate of appreciation for the Hagerstown Police Department Victim Witness Advocate Unit. Whereas, the Hagerstown Department of Police Victim Witness Advocate Unit was created in 1994. And whereas, the operation of the unit requires participation on a volunteer basis with members being called out to assist at any time of the day or night, they have unselfishly given countless amounts of their time and professional services to the community for almost two decades. And whereas, members provide confidential assistance and exemplary support services to victims of violent crime, to friends and family of persons involved in sensitive issues such as deaths and serious accidents, and act as liaisons between officers and victims, families and witnesses. And whereas, although they do not strive to be recognized, they are more than deserving of this highest recognition and therefore are this year's recipient of the Maryland Governor's Victim Assistance Award Outstanding Volunteer Contribution to Victim Services of the Maryland State Board of Victim Services effective April 3rd, 2014. Now therefore, with the support of the City Council, I, David Geisberts, the Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, hereby congratulate the Victim Witness Advocate Unit of the Hagerstown Police Department. And we express our appreciation for their dedication, commitment, and service to the City of Hagerstown and the citizens of our community. So thank you on behalf of the City Council and the citizens. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your work. And keep it up.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks, Chief. Thank you, guys. And who would like to take this? Chief?
Mom.
Mom? Mom? All right.
Writing it for chief.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So the next item on our agenda is the review of the draft catalytic projects and programs by Urban Partners. It's very exciting. I know that council members had the opportunity to preview some of this in the last week or so. The idea for tonight is that we want endorsement from the council to move forward with -- basically to give them the go-ahead to draft the further detailed economic analysis of these projects and pro formas that can be used to market and get these projects underway. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Kathy Marr and Jim Hartling and Jill Frick. Take it away.
Yes, we're back, as we indicated we would weeks ago. We have Jim Hartling with us again from Urban Partners. He's back to provide us with the recommendations for catalytic projects and programs for further study for the implementation plan. At this point, they've completed most of the public input and their market analysis of our community. And then now they've drafted these recommendations for you. And then what we hope to be able to achieve tonight, if possible, is consensus for Urban Partners to move forward with these eight, some modification of the eight, but some indication that it's time now for them to do the detailed development analyses over the next six to eight weeks of the catalytic projects and programs that we feel would be important for further study. And so we passed out tonight the final draft of the document of the recommended projects and programs. And then Jim will go over it with you in more detail and be available for discussion.
Right. Thank you, Kathy. Good evening. Good afternoon, I guess, Mayor Geiser, some members of the council. Pleased to be here. Let me just talk briefly. I'm going to use the PowerPoint up here on the screen if I'm doing it properly. There you go. Let me just talk briefly about, as Kathy talked briefly, about the status of the project to date. We've finished the market analysis, the physical analysis. We have conducted the public input workshop where we had, I think, very, very active and excellent participation by 80 or 100 people. It was a substantial number. We've had a great variety of interviews with stakeholders. We've had focus groups with a variety of organizations and collections of people with particular interests. I think these discussions were pretty candid. We've gotten a lot of input. From all that, and working from your sustainable development plan for the downtown that was done two years ago, we have pulled out the eight projects we're going to talk to you about tonight as candidates to be the catalytic projects that we will then go into much further analysis of. So what we're looking for tonight is either endorsement of these or modification of these so we can move forward. And the next steps that we'll be pursuing are detailed analysis of each of them, figuring out how participation will occur between public, private, and civic interests, what the economics of them are, what it will take to implement them, if they would occur in phases, and really put that all together into the final economic analysis and implementation plan, which I believe is scheduled for presentation to you June 17th, according to my calendar. And Kathy's pretty good about forcing me to stick with these things. So I'm pretty sure I will be here, barring some unusual circumstance. The projects that we're focusing on right now really are, I would say, five different new development initiatives and three projects that are expansions of activities you already have going on now. The five new development initiatives, and I'll go into each of them in more detail in a moment. The first is a strategy for new office development and recruitment downtown. The second is the Maryland Theater Expansion Project. The third is support of USMH's expansion and related activities related to that student support. The fourth is a potential hotel conference center, heritage center. The fifth is linking city park and the arts and entertainment district with a trail and having new housing developed along it. So those are the five real development initiatives. The expansion of projects currently underway include expanding your downtown arts and entertainment and events programming, expanding the operations of the city farmer's market, expanding and targeting homeownership support strategies to encourage more market rate homeownership in the downtown area. Let me go into each of them in some detail. First, the strategy for new office development and recruitment. We've had a number of discussions about the loss of office users from downtown. In the focus groups and stakeholder interviews, we got a number of sagas of various events. What we felt, though, was that as these discussions were given to us, it was always as if you were catching up in certain cases. And the notion of this is to go the other way, to be very proactive and to put the city in a position where you are able to, in real time, provide a competitive position for new office development and recruitment anytime an opportunity arises. And what we have seen in other communities is candidly, governments don't build office buildings. Developers build office buildings. And so the circumstance that we need to attract here is to put the city in a collaborative partnership with a selected developer, clearly through whatever is a publicly acceptable process to do that. We're not suggesting how that would be right now. But to put you in a position where you are at the forefront of competitiveness for any new office opportunity that arises, whether it's private or it's public, that would also capture certain relocations, expansions, all the usual things that go on in the office market. And we think that you have the opportunity right now to utilize one of your centrally-located resources, which is the central parking lot, which in fact, your economic development people have previously taken a look at how at least a portion of it might be developed for an office building. But really, take that lot and use that as the basis for entering into a partnership with a developer who would then be out there competing in the marketplace. And we've done a quick sketch. This is just very preliminary. We'll do much more work if you endorse this concept later. But there's a number of buildings that could be built there within the context of, you know, good circulation, open space. Eventually, you would have to build a parking deck in order to support increased use in the loss of parking spaces. And that's one of the things we'll calculate, is sort of when that has to happen and how. But it seemed to us that this is a resource that the development community would find attractive to become your partner, and they could be marketing from it. Now, does that mean that's all that happens in the way of office development? No, I don't think so. If you are actively out there in the community marketplace competing for office users, you will see other opportunities that maybe are more appropriately handled in the rehabilitation of an existing building or possibly even on some other site. And there will be collateral information provided to other property owners as this comes. But it puts you in a position to be a competitive entity out there in the marketplace. And we think that's extremely important. And we're seeing that in other communities is the way that communities are able to be a player in the regional office market. So that's the first suggested initiative. The second one is the expansion of the Maryland Theater. Their current proposal, which needs more elaboration, involves the redevelopment of the building adjacent to the theater building itself, adding new uses in that facility, and perhaps relating it to complementary activities such as the proposed Bispa Expansion being under consideration by the school district, as well as discovery station's interest in trying to somehow relocate within this general area. Those are the development aspects. And I think that's mostly what has been discussed when the Maryland Theater Expansion was discussed or talked about. We think there's another element of this which came from our discussions with the management of the theater. And that is, right now, they have 150 show days annually. And we can tell you from all of the input, I mean literally all of the input that we have gotten from the community, that downtown is perceived in a much more positive manner whenever there is active events and programming, especially at the Maryland Theater. It is seen as a regional resource, and it changes the character of use in the evening hours in downtown, very positively. The management of the theater group tells us they can grow their number of shows by 50% over a period of perhaps 10 years, from 150 to 225, within their existing confines of their performance space. And they need other support space, obviously, within that. And so we believe as part of this expansion project, it should also include support for additional organizational infrastructure within the theater itself to be able to capture, to market, to produce those additional days. Because every day you add is a day that's viewed very positively in the community. That seems very important to us. So it's both physical buildings and organizational growth that we're talking about here. The third is the USMH Expansion Support Strategy. USMH has articulated to us the intent to grow their enrollment from the current 500 to about 750 within an indeterminate number of years, but not a lot of years, a few years. What's happening in parallel to that, and is already happening now, is they are attracting students who are in residence, not just commuter students. So there is a market right now for student housing in the vicinity of the campus. So the idea of this strategy is to support the growth of classroom space and other supportive space for education, as well as to capture through private market activity an important element of that student housing market and use that to create more people living downtown. We think this offers the possibility in particular of conversion of upper floors of properties, vacant upper floors of properties, very close to the campus. We're particularly thinking about the unit block of West Washington and the unit block of North Potomac, where there's a number of vacant upper floors that could be readily used as a model of how to capture student housing within this area. Now, there are many code issues we're going to have to drill into on this. There's housing models. These tend to be units with two bedrooms and four students, that kind of thing. Where you park them, there's all those issues to drill into. But that's what we're proposing to do in this third element. The fourth is the notion of a growth in your hotel supply, particularly around a conference center. And it's then, fortuitous, we think, potential to relate that to a heritage center in downtown. Right now, in our market research on hotels, what we found is that there is growth in demand for hotels in Washington County. Room night demand has been going up from year to year. And the hotels that have been added most recently in the marketplace, and I'm going to use some jargon that they use in this business, which are considered to be upscale hotels. Don't ask me where they got these names, but we just use them. Upscale, your Courtyard by Marriott, the Spring Hill Suites, and the Homewood Suites. Those are the three most recent entries into the marketplace. They are the highest And the hotels that have been added most recently in the marketplace, and I'm going to use some jargon that they use in this business, which are considered to be upscale hotels. Don't ask me where they got these names, but we just use them. Upscale, your Courtyard by Marriott, the Spring Hill Suites and the Homewood Suites. Those are the three most recent entries into the marketplace. They are the highest quality in terms of this ranking system in the marketplace. And they appear, from what we're seeing, with the impact on average room rates and utilization, to have captured market that was perhaps latent there. The next thing to do would be to go one step above that. And that's what's called upper upscale, which you have none of here. It is the typical hotel you would have with some kind of a conference center facility. This would be, if you're looking in the area regionally, similar to the Wyndham in Gettysburg, which has a conference center with it. Now, perhaps you don't go that high, perhaps it's another facility. But we think there's the opportunity here to add a hotel. It would be good to add it downtown or near downtown. It would be good to have it be at high quality and to have a traffic generator such as a conference center associated with it. Looking at where this might work in downtown, the site that really leaps out is the Farmer Hospital site. And there are two reasons for that. The first is there's already a garage there, so there's an asset immediately to build from for the hotel. The second is that the corner of that site, which is at Washington Cannon, is visible from and can be accessed in both directions from the dual highway as it splits to Franklin and Washington. You can turn left on Cannon and go right down to it. So it's a really good location for this kind of use. And the notion here is that in addition to that, that there would be an effort to capture a larger percentage of the historic tourism, particularly from Antietam Battlefield, by having an associated heritage center at this location to attract people. And then use a good portion of the high ground on that site as more of an outdoor commemorative park, which could include elements, we understand there were cannons there during the Battle of Hagerstown. You could put elements like that that would be attractive to people. Now, we haven't, other than just sort of saying these things, we haven't drilled into all of the economics of this. Certainly think this is a project that would probably take a longer period of time to engage in. But it has two assets at the moment. One is that the entire site's in the ownership of the hospital, and therefore, there's no complex site assembly here. The second is it already has a garage. So you've got assets to work from. Now, we clearly have to go much further and drill into the real economics of this. Where would you position it? Does it work at that level? That's what we'll be proposing to do over the next few weeks. So that's the fourth idea. And here's an example of how it might lay out. If you look at it, the little tip up there at the top is an entrance that could come off of Cannon, so, excuse me. So a car is making a left off of Franklin over to Cannon, could come right to there. It would connect to the garage, to the conference center, Heritage Center, then ultimately to the commemorative park. The fifth idea is to link City Park and the Arts and Entertainment District with a trail and new housing. The southwest part of City Center has a relatively strong housing market. We've seen some housing prices north of 150,000 there. Building a trail, and I'm going to go to the next slide here to get a picture of this. We believe it is possible, and I will give credit, or mention to the Marsh Run concept that was out there a few years ago. This is a portion of that and a derivation of that. But the notion here is that one could build a trail, if you start at City Park, along Summit, then along Lee, build a new, along the sidewalks there, then up, through generally property that's owned by the housing authority, property that's owned by the county right now, and then the edge of the parking lot of the newspaper, up to Antietam, and then go along Antietam to the various cut-throughs to Public Square, either down to Potomac, up Courtway, or there's a third way through to Washington there. So there would be really highlighted as a trail system that would get you all the way from Public Square out to City Park. And then along that trail system, we would propose that you could begin to match up some of the opportunities for housing development that were reported in the surveys that were done of residents. And I believe I've reported before in other forums that we got a very positive response here, it was 30% positive. And that that response tended to fall into three or four different segments. Some of those segments were the conversion of buildings into lofts, historic buildings. Others were for new townhome construction. Others, and we'll get to this later, were for quality historic housing. So we had many different market niches here. So what we're proposing here is that along Antietam, there would be the rehabilitation of the largely vacant loft buildings from Potomac over to where this trail would go down, which is essentially over to the parking lot for the newspaper, as well as the conversion of the Dagmar Hotel there at the corner of Summit and Antietam into either rental or sale loft housing, we're not sure which would be appropriate yet. So that would be a full block of rehabilitated housing right up here coming off of the Arts and Entertainment District and the Public Square. You would then go down the trail, and there's opportunities, and we're showing here only publicly owned land. The county owns one parcel on the north side of Baltimore. And then there's some additional land left over that the housing authority owns on the south side of Baltimore. You'd have the opportunity to build new townhouses here and begin to create a neighborhood connectedness between Prospect and Summit Streets over toward the Arts and Entertainment District. There's a particular opportunity on Summit, because there's a huge grade change as you come east of Summit. And you'd actually have the opportunity to stack townhomes so that the upper units would have Summit Street entrances and would then create a two-sided residential street on Summit, whereas the lower units could relate more to the trail and the housing that's down there. So there's some interesting opportunities, even within these first few parcels. Assuming that this got going, you could then see other private property owners with underutilized loft buildings or with facilities that are perhaps of less value or using the end of their productive life, creating opportunities for additional housing development privately on parcels so that this could be built out over a period of many years. I mean, this is not going to happen instantly, and we need to phase in, take a look at what reasonable absorption would be for this. But it seems this gives us an opportunity to really build from the housing strength in the southwest portion of the city center, as well as from the tremendous asset of City Park, to connect all of that to the core of the Arts and Entertainment District and the Public Square in a very positive way. So those are the five development initiatives. In terms of programming, we're proposing to expand the downtown arts and events programming. Again, as I mentioned, anytime there's an event, we get very positive response where people, "I came down there, it was great, you know, why can't we have more of this?" Well, why can't we have more of this? This is really drilling into how one would do this. Small events, large events. Big question of who sponsors these, we have to drill into that. Clearly, the government cannot become the sponsor of all of these events. We need to look for, you know, private and civic participation in this. So that's the sixth idea, really expand the program, get more people coming more frequently to the downtown. The second is expanding the operations of the city farmer's market. Right now, your market is open a fabulous seven hours a week. And people love it for those seven hours a week, from what we can tell. However, if it were open 35 hours a week, which is basically a shift for workers, you would have five times the impact. Our market analysis has found that the county is short on specialty food stores compared to national standards. There's the opportunity to add many tens of, really 15,000 to 20,000 square feet of new specialty stores. A farmer's market operating a full shift is in effect adding those specialty stores. That's what it's doing. We also had input at public meetings and from focus groups saying, "One of the problems with living downtown is there's not sufficient regular commercial amenities to support downtown living. We need a grocery store." Well, how about a farmer's market? You know, which could be done, literally at this point, there's a lot of operational issues left to get into, but literally by simply saying, "We're going to be open four days a week instead of one day." It requires, you know, other kinds of support to make this go. We've got to make sure the vendors and others are prepared to do that. But that could immediately expand the presence of the downtown, both in specialty food and as a place that has amenities for downtown residents. And finally, our eighth one is to expand and target our homeownership support strategies. You've attempted a number of activities, I think many of them have had success. But one report we got continuously from the public meetings and the focus groups was that improved investment by one person on a block did not create a positive neighborhood. That if other properties continued to be vacant or if the management of those properties were creating nuisance conditions, that you did not create the consistent core to sustain additional purchases of homes by homeowners. That's a negative. On the positive side, the surveying says a lot of people want to live downtown in these older historic properties. So what we're proposing here is very concentrated effort, both of your nuisance abatement programs, as well as of financial assistance programs to block by block strengthen areas of homeownership in downtown, highly targeted. And so we've begun the effort to say, "Where would you start? What would you focus on?" And we both looked where you've had activity, but also where we are seeing comparatively high homeownership sales prices within the downtown right now. And it tends to fall into four general areas. The first of them in the southwest part of City Center are along Prospect and Summit. There's also a strong block or two along South Potomac below Baltimore. The blocks along Antietam, East Antietam, and the 100 block of Mulberry and King Street. And then finally, an area generally bounded by East, North, Kramer's Alley, and Mulberry. It's in those areas when we look at actual sales prices for homes, we see comparative strength right now within the downtown. And so what we're suggesting is to expand and target additional assistance in these communities to really build those up to self-sustaining market conditions. And this is something that would be done, we think, in ways that both support homeowners and try to support contractors who are rehabilitating property in a way in which you get additional product that people want to buy. Because not everyone wants to fix up a house. And so figuring out how to support contractors to do that for you becomes another element, another tool in your toolkit. So those are the eight strategies in general that we're pursuing, we're suggesting be pursued, that we would drill into in more detail. Once you give us endorsement or modification of these, we would next go into a very detailed analysis of each of them. We'll be working closely with your staff, dealing with the private community in terms of various cost and investment factors, reviewing and refining them, and then coming up with a strategy for how to implement each of them. And that's what we'll bring back to you in June. So, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. It's a very exciting endeavor.
I'm anxious to hear the feedback of the council. Mr. Munson?
Good piece of work.
Thank you. But...
I especially like the first project in that it seems to be the project that could stoke the fires to help get the rest of them done. My only question is, if we move forward on this, are you going to be prepared as a company to move forward with us for the next decade, maybe?
We love to have long-going consultant contracts, believe me.
We love to have successful people working with us.
Well, let us cross that bridge when you think we're giving you the right stuff in another couple of months.
The bonds offer you $500 a year retain.
Yes, I caught that, I caught that.
Go up into a thousand.
And perhaps a contractor rehabbed house to sleep in one night a week. Yes, I got it.
There's some nice ones in that area there, yeah.
Very nice ones.
Others, Ms. Nye, what say you?
Not much. Still calling it over. There's some of these proposals I think we've seen before and others. And I don't know.
Would you like to learn more about these proposals? I mean, the idea is that they would take this and run with it and get...
I know, I know. And again, I'm still calling it over.
Okay. Anyone else? Thoughts, reactions, questions?
I think it's a, I'm very impressed. Some things that, as Penny said, have been looked at before, but there are others that have not. And some of the things that I will tell you that, while I like all the projects, some look more reasonable to get done and get that step up, and some otherwise. I certainly, out of these, I see the Maryland Theater Expansion as an integral part of downtown, I agree with you on that. I also think that the USMH Expansion. I see those two things as maybe things that can be done quicker than some of the others, and I...
Lower hanging fruit.
Right, and I think the success will build upon success. So if we can get the lower hanging fruit and show that we can get something accomplished, because I think the Lincoln City Park and the housing may be fundamentally the most important one of them all, but maybe not the easiest one to do as far as low hanging fruit. And it would appear to me that the, out of all these, the one that I would probably tend to put on the back burner and think that it's a very long-term goal that may fit in with the other things after they're accomplished is the Hotel Conference Center. I think we're probably a long way off from achieving that, and I would be inclined to look at these other things, including, obviously, the new office development. That is one that staff, I think, was a step ahead on. But I think it's very positive, and I would like to see the implementation process.
So essentially, you're endorsing the eight that are there? You want to get more information, have them do the detailed analysis? Mr. Brubaker?
Well, I think it should be emphasized in terms of implementation that these are projects that aren't just the city government, that many outcomes can be...
You want Marty?
That these projects are not just the city government. That it's a sort of a, and they're pragmatic, I think. Even the Conference Center is something that maybe the public could prepare some of the groundwork, but it would, you know, really be put out to developers to see if they could develop it along the lines of what our consultant lays out. But I see the number one is, to me, the most critical because it's to get solid, larger-scale activity in the core that then attracts others. I think there's probably, we probably all have things that we wonder why they aren't here. And in the core, I was, I'm somewhat concerned that there isn't much discussion of the, you know, our existing older buildings, our existing built infrastructure and so forth. But I do agree that those lots, which are all under our control right now, are a good place to, where we can actually move forward. And then I think that might transfer to the rest of downtown. And that's the link that I hope for. I like the idea of the practical ability to get larger-scale things. And I would emphasize that what's on the maps that's in this report are just exemplary. They're not, they're only, this is one way it could work. There's going to be a building here or something like that. That's the same with the trail, they're exemplary, they're ideas. But that doesn't mean there's going to be a building on that corner or in that location necessarily.
Although I would note, councilman, that I would love to see some homes on the other side of Summit, on the trail. That would be good.
Yeah, I agree, there's some there more emphatic than others. How's that?
Yes, exactly.
But again, I know how people are. You can't put it there, therefore, the whole thing's not good. It's not like that.
This is just the beginning of looking at how it might work.
And what you're going to look at will still not necessarily say that because you're going to get into the economic and other kinds of feasibility studies. I am impressed that the market, that they've looked at the market. Clearly, they've brought up the market a number of times, our local situation. Clearly, they've brought up the market a number of times, our local situation, and I appreciate that. So I think that, you know, it's a worthwhile, and again, I think fairly practical list of things that can be addressed reasonably quickly.
Mr. Alshire.
I guess just a couple of comments. And I hear, Mary, what you're asking is, you know, whether we endorse the eight or not, and I'm not really sure how to answer that. I don't know what I'm being asked to endorse. You know, if it's to sell the central lot at some point to some private entity that would like to develop it for office space, I'm sure at some point if that occurs and we want to market it that way, I don't have any opposition to that. But within that specific item, you have identified a parking garage, and clearly, the conversation to date for the next parking garage has been over near the Court complex. So, you know, my preference is still there if we're talking about the city investing public's money into infrastructure as it relates to something like that. It's not there. It's in a parking garage where clearly, currently, parking is in high demand. And I think it should be clear, you know, we discussed this about, what, 10, 15 minutes ago. Same thing with the Maryland Theater. I know there's been an effort for at least 15 years for an 11, $12 million project to expand that out to the curb. You know, if an entity, you know, assists in that, or the Maryland Theater has adequate funding to do that, then certainly, you know, I think the city would make a reasonable effort to assist in that. But we can't really be the, you know, the purveyor of that $12 million project. Same thing with University of Maryland, the expansion of 250 students. You know, it's a state university. I think we can certainly collaborate on that. I think, as I said, you know, a year and a half ago, I think education is the key to the advancement of downtown. I think it has been. When I look at the hospital property, you know, you show on here a heritage park for the entire property that was the hospital. That's a property that the hospital, I've heard in figures of $4 to $5 million, they want to sell that property for. By no means would I endorse that, what I consider to be a crucial piece of property to sit as a untaxed park in perpetuity. I don't think that's its highest and best use. I just don't. And I also don't think that the convention and hotel is best suited downtown. I don't think that we have this necessity to cram everything or all of the ideas into that core. I think that some things are better suited, you know, in other areas of, you know, our larger city proper. And I agree with Lou in the comments for the Summit Avenue project. I mean, I think it's a great idea. It's been around for a while. You know, coalescing eight or 10 private, large private properties into that use, you know, largely rests with some private entity that would like to do so. And then these programming items, clearly, we're going to support additional events downtown. I don't think that any of those are, you know, are largely opposable. But that's my two cents. I just, I don't know what I'm being asked to say I'm in favor of this evening, you know, as far as eight items, because there's clearly a number of these, the elements of which I'm just not in favor of.
I just want to make one clarification, because one of the questions I had was the parking garage on the surface lot site. And it's my understanding that it's not build a parking garage and then ask the buildings to come. In fact, buildings could be built without building the parking garage. It's to be staged, and it's to serve that, those, that development, that floor space that's built in that area, but it's not to be built first and attract the buildings. I think that's, and they're going to, as part of their pro forma, illustrate maybe state when that might be built and how it might be financed.
And for me, I guess I look at the effort in the context of addressing our existing deficiencies rather than, I guess, a loftier opportunity. And for me, I look at that issue and say, okay, you know, there's clearly been discussion had on adding additional parking structures, and clearly, that discussion has been where parking is in demand based on current and, you know, reasonably projected use. I didn't see any inclusion in here of the, you know, we'll call it the proliferation, if you will, of the varying social service entities throughout downtown, which is a very inefficient model that we currently have, but many folks have made comment, needs to resolve to some greater efficiency. There's no inclusion of the large number of religious institutions that we have downtown, which I continue to say, I think is a very key, and will play a very key and pivotal role in sustainable redevelopment of downtown, because they occupy and own so much downtown property.
I think that's an ongoing effort by staff, though, to engage the religious institutions that do have a large footprint, undeniably. But I think it, in terms of how we look at these catalyst projects, you know, I think these are all legitimate questions. I think letting them go forward in exploring what is possible in terms of the economic feasibility and the phasing and all of those details, I think, is what the next step will be. That's why we want the endorsement to say, okay, we might not like or agree with every detail in here, but let's get more information. Let's let urban partners go forward, gather more data, do more analysis, and come back with more detailed information that then can be marketed. The staff can then go, you know, market the central lot, working with experts in that field to get these projects going, because ultimately, we need to find out how much in each of these proposals, how much public involvement there will be versus private investment. I've said all along, the goal is not to have eight catalyst projects that the city is entirely responsible for. I don't think anyone thinks that that's feasible.
No, but I guess maybe my inclination...
And the other thing, too, is that just because things are not in this report doesn't mean they cannot also be pursued either privately or in addition to what is being proposed in this. For instance, another deck. You know, if there are properties along the, what is it, the uniblock of Summit and Antietam, and, you know, that block there where the bank owns the lot, you know, if the only way to revitalize that block is to build a parking deck, then there may be an opportunity, working with those various property owners, to get a deck built with city participation. But I don't think that would preclude any of these other projects from moving forward simultaneously.
And that, I guess, what I'm saying is, I think that there are clearly conversations and, you know, that have occurred, one of which is the expansion of the Board of Education's educational footprint. And I see here Maryland Theater and University mentioned as numbers two and four, but nothing as it relates specifically to that particular effort. You know, the central lot as a Class A office space, I'd be interested to see how that, how that type of analysis works into the fact that right next door to where we're talking about, you know, a private developer has renovated a large office building, you know, into office space, and how that has, how that has fared within the market, you know, to understand, you know, how that would fare to...
Are you talking about the Mulberry lots?
Yeah, I guess the loft one, property. Yeah, I mean, I just...
I don't think that's considered Class A office space, though, right?
I don't know. I mean, I'm not an expert in that.
Well, let me, I would like to comment on this one, because I, it's, what we're proposing here is a little more complicated than just build an office building. The, we have looked and talked in some depth to the developer of the Mulberry lots, and we understand the market they're going for. And clearly, they have not filled the space, and therefore, doing something to compete with them wouldn't make a lot of sense right now. What we're suggesting here is to use the central lot as a resource to go compete for users that would not respond to what you now have in the downtown. And therefore, you know, the Susquehanna Banks and others who have wanted, apparently, given what they did, a new building, and were unable to agree that there was a timely, effective product available for them downtown. I don't know what that decision-making was, but I'm reacting to what I saw. So that the notion here is to create a process to compete for things that you have not successfully competed for lately, not to compete with your current downtown product and therefore put it in an even worse position, but rather to try to be in a position to go after the things that you have lost in previous competitions. And I would like to also reinforce what Councilman Brubaker said. We're only showing a parking facility here on the assumption that we need to analyze when that becomes a necessity and therefore a cost. Not to do it, but rather to say, you know, if you build one building, do you have enough parking left? If you build two buildings, do you have enough parking left? If you build three, oh, we don't have enough parking left. Now, we've got to do something, therefore, the cost of that third building has extra cost. And to be able to lay that out for all of you and say, here it is. Here are the options, and here's what it means, and, you know, if you get into this, this is what's likely to happen, but then you get to the second building or the third building.
But the fact that we could go out to the market and say, look, here's a, basically a pad-ready site, and perhaps the city can give it to you for zero, that becomes a competitive attraction, I would imagine, in the marketplace.
Yeah, right. But as I said, you have the further problem of even knowing when the right moment is to be competing, because there's a lot of stuff that happens in the private development world that those of us who operate largely in the public environment only hear about later. And so, so being in a position to get through the door early and be able to make that pitch becomes a part of this, too. So that is, it's more of a process thing than a particular building thing, but it's aimed at capturing something that has not occurred to this point. And that's the focus of that one. I would also just respond to one of the comments you made. We clearly do not expect that the city is paying for all this stuff. I mean, in some ways, if these things go forward, besides showing what is feasible in the private-for-profit world, it's also saying to other governments and to the civic leadership and the philanthropic community, if you want these things to happen, this is the scale at which you must step up also. So we're laying that all out there so that the community as a whole knows where it needs to participate.
Right, because ultimately, this is a community plan, not a city plan. And it's got to have the buy-in from all of the stakeholders who have participated up until this point to remain stakeholders and actually do...
So what time do we get our state delegation to board with this? Because, I mean, when you see the Maryland Theater project, and you see over 600,000 in private contributions, and over 700,000 in local and county contributions, and our delegation refusing to even support the bond bill, I mean, if an integral part of this is the state, then unless we sit down and talk to Mr. Serafini and the rest of them down there to see if they're going to support us, one thing we have to do is come to a conclusion whether this community can get anything done if we cannot get support from our local delegation.
And if I get an injector, and I do not know any of the politics we're discussing, but often, a use of this kind of a strategy is, if there is real civic push behind it as a strategy, is to say, here's the wish list. Here's the priorities. Here's what we need, you know? Please help us with this. And that can help to focus the discussion. And that, we worked on the Avenue of the Arts in Philadelphia. I can tell you that, you know, the mayor went to the governor and said, we need $50 million for this, and it's our priority, and, you know, let's do something with it. And they got $50 million ultimately. It don't happen instantly, but, and I'm not saying the same thing happens here at that scale, but it does create an agenda for that discussion, and that can be really important.
I'd like to concur with that. I sat in that legislature for 36 years, and I saw what you're describing happened in Baltimore City over and over again. I saw it happen in Townsend, Montgomery County.
Frederick.
So Doc McClellan, bring $11 million home to Frederick. These things, these things correctly presented do engender interest and enthusiasm in Annapolis. And I think most of the people down there clearly understand that we are a part of the state regardless of where our delegation stands in that regard, and that we have to survive, too, and we have interests, too. And we can probably go around the ones who would not support us, who I think, anyhow. Can I just say a couple more things? This is a very good piece of work. I mean, we, you've given us our money's worth.
Well, not yet.
And we expect a lot more from you.
We're only halfway done, Don.
But I just want to say you have. Now, frankly, everybody was looking for some, is always, looking for some miracle to drop out of heaven and say, poof, we got the magic answer. But we all know there are no magic answers. It only gets done if the right attitude exists and if the right conditions exist. But I think what you've given us here is a blueprint which is both doable, and that's very important. Why suggest stuff if it can't ever get done? Some parts of it harder than others, but clearly, it's doable. And it's a goal that could really turn downtown Hagerstown and other parts of Hagerstown around. And, I mean, I really look at this, these projects that you presented as a glass half full, not half-empty. And this gives us, this gives us some really good goals to go after. And I do think that we could get the General Assembly interested in this. And, I mean, it's kind of like our turn in the General Assembly. And, I mean, this is great. And the next, and the next part, the next phase, it sounds to me like what you're saying is, you're going to show us how to get there.
Or perhaps that one or another of these don't get there.
Okay, or don't get there.
I mean, we're not, we think these will work, but we haven't really drilled into them yet, and we're looking for endorsement to say, go drill into these, I guess.
So, one last final comment, if I could. The Maryland Theater is an essential part of this. The school for, the expansion of the School for the Arts, of which there is considerable talk in the background, is vital for this, too, I think. And to the extent that we can accomplish all of them together, we're going to be seeing some, some really good things happen in downtown, which will, which will make people happier with downtown, and which will energize downtown. So when you look at this further, try to look at it in that way, too. I would appreciate that.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Don. If I could just add one thing. I think Kristin brought up some interesting ideas that you just responded to in a manner that I think is very important for us to understand. I mentioned that I thought the Hotel Conference Center may be a little bit out there as far as really getting accomplished, but what you have said is very important when you indicate, yeah, well, we may come back and tell you some of these things we can't do. And to some degree, the can't do's, in some respects, are as important as the can do's, because just like the horror that's going on in the Indian Ocean, as they say, where we look and don't find the plane, it's not that we wasted our time. We know it's not there. And if you were to come back and say, we've looked at eight of these, and six of these... And if you were to come back and say, we've looked at eight of these, and six of these, let me show you how they work, and by the way, you guys are right about the hospital site and the conference center, we looked at it, we don't think it can be done. If we get the quote, what we call in law school, negative conclusions, that is still a very vital thing. It puts us in a situation where we say, okay, this is something that we've looked at for years, but we've never had anybody look at to see whether it was really reasonable to implement. And now we have a study that says, hey, get off this or go towards this. So I think the fact that some of these things you may study and find the negative conclusion is not a negative thing. It is still a positive thing, telling us what's feasible and what's not feasible, and where we should devote our resources and where we should stop devoting our resources. And I think that for that reason, I would like to see all eight of these things looked at. Because the one thing that's been made clear to me about your organization, not so much from you, but from the elected officials that have been working with you, is that you are quite willing to tell us, we don't think this project will work.
Yes, we're cranky sometimes.
Versus leading us down to a path-
They've already said some of that.
And that's very positive. It's like in my business, it doesn't do me any good to tell a client what a judge is going to do if I really don't think it's going to work, because ultimately, that's going to not be beneficial for our relationship. And the same is true with this. And that's why I think all eight items are well worth looking at.
I think we should address, it's been brought up a couple of times, how important the BISPA Possible Expansion kind of project is, and we recognize that. And Urban Partners had initially suggested something like that should be in here, but we didn't feel like this report should compete with the process that the school system is going through on their own analysis. And so that's why it didn't get on the eight, but we do recognize that it's very important for the downtown with the, expanding the educational footprint.
And I would think eventually, somewhere along the line, that our state delegation should be some of the stakeholders. I'm assuming they haven't been. But when we get this feasibility, I think it's important to go to them and say, look, this is how we see it works, and this is the state component of it. Are you guys on board with this thing? Because like I say, I would, we all thought, we all thought based upon past history, that if our state delegation saw the community commitment to the Maryland Theater, that it would be a natural for them to jump on board. I think we were all absolutely astounded, especially after hearing lip service about it from them, just astounded to hear they could not support that bond bill, which tangentially, let's not misunderstand anything, let's get this straight. When our state delegation refuses to support our local bond bills, let's say what we should say, they are supporting bond bills in other jurisdictions.
Absolutely.
That's what needs to be said. It's not, for people who say they're being responsible with our budget, I say to them, you are supporting bond bills in Montgomery County, Baltimore County, Baltimore City, the very people that you complain about, you're voting for. They are empowering those people to get the money because they are refusing to bring it to us. They're refusing to bring it to us when you have almost 3/4 of a million dollars in private contribution and 3/4 of a million dollar in local contributions. The same people that said, sat right here, that same delegation said, the funding method for a stadium as a third private, a third local, and a third state won't even stand up and say that when it comes to the funding of what, as you accurately say, is the one thing this entire community supports. There is nobody that doesn't support this idea, and to have us open up the newspaper collectively as a community and read that our local delegation is supporting bond bills in Montgomery County is frustrating. And I just can't, can't not go there because all of this fails if we end up with that kind of thinking at the state level, that they want to support Montgomery County and Baltimore City but not Hagerstown.
You don't know how right you are. There's a certain amount every year that the governor puts in the budget for bond bills, and it goes somewhere.
It goes. And if they're not bringing it here, they're supporting it in other jurisdictions. And for them to say that they are actually being fiscally responsible is just hiding behind a lie. They are not being fiscally responsible, they're sending our money to other sections of the state.
Amen.
And, you know, the other opportunities to collaborate with the state, not only the delegation, but at the, you know, the whole General Assembly, are these, this idea of revitalization zones, where the state agrees that a portion of, or all of the state sales tax collected as part of new projects get to go towards the financing. So there are mechanisms worth exploring. Some of these came up late in the game before this last General Assembly, but those would be the things worth exploring as we move forward with analyzing these potential projects, as well as after, you know, the pro formas and everything are finished and we go into the summer prior to next year's legislative session. I will say, the delegate Seraphini has reached out. I haven't responded, but I saw an email that I hadn't really been able to fully read, but he is offering to have the delegate from Baltimore, what, City, Maggie McIntosh, come and give us a lesson on how she's been able to pass all this legislation to help Baltimore. So, you know, I don't know if we need her to come and tell us this, we just need the General Assembly to do it to help support Hagerstown.
Sure, we'd like our delegation to come and explain it to us instead of telling us they're going to bring somebody from Baltimore City to tell us what we should do up here.
Right, right. So I do recognize and share the frustration at the inaction of the members, of some of the members of our delegation to get some of these things supported. I do think there's opportunities to get support from the state. I think there is interest in Hagerstown and helping Hagerstown at the state level. And so it's trying to herd all those cats. But, you know, there is this tendency in the history of just telling the city how stupid we are and everything, and here's what you should do. You know, so in my business, we say, stop shitting on yourself, and we don't like to be shitted on. But I think this will give us a proactive approach to the kinds of things we want to see in our community. You know, would it be, it would be nice to have a hotel and a conference center. So let's find out if it's feasible and which partners need to come together. You know, maybe there's a way to, you know, look at the hotel motel tax in order to make the Heritage Park and the Conference Center part of it work. You know, there are ways, I think, to make some of these things feasible, or at least sweeten, you know, ways to sweeten the development community to, you know, take on some of these projects. So I think, I mean, I agree with Councilmember Metzger. I think all of these are worth, you know, exploring further and gathering more information. And, Mr. City Administrator, do you have anything to add?
Well, just a couple of quick comments. I wanted to emphasize that we're staying on course with the project as we discussed it with council last fall and December when you approved the contract with Urban Partners. We've had a whole lot of community and citizen input on this project, so Jim and Urban Partners are not operating in a vacuum. I think there's a real strong community basis to this. We're coordinating within the context of our Sustainable Communities Plan, which was developed with citizen input two years ago, and we discussed that with council at the start of this project. We're also collaborating with the State Department of Business and Economic Development, who provided the funding. So I think we're staying in touch with them. And I think what Urban Partners is doing and has done for us, which we were hoping for, is give us positive ideas that create a potential positive roadmap for us that still needs some more analysis, that still needs more information. But I think, and ultimately, some of these projects may prove to be unfeasible or unrealistic, but they're working within this context of reality, which is what we asked them to do for us. You know, give us something that's practical, just don't bring us ideas and plop them in our lap and then say, go to it. Their work's going much further beyond that, and I think that's what the next step does for us, too, is brings back more useful information for the mayor and council that gives you more of an idea of what it might take to do some of these projects, some lower hanging fruit than others, but we would expect to have some projects that stretch us on this list. That's what we need. And similar to the Cy Palmier project from years ago, you know, it'll happen over time. You know, when they presented their project to us with their recommendations, we didn't, we didn't complete it in a year. It took time for us to do that, and over time, we really did tackle the main elements of their proposal for us. So I would see something similar here.
You know, each time, each week, our clerk puts together our agenda, puts a little saying on it. And if you look at it this week, incidentally, she's the best in the state. Thank you, Donna. And this week, the saying is, it always seems impossible until it's done. And I think that pretty well sums up where we need to go. I think we ought to move to phase two.
Mr. Rousher, and then Mr. Brubaker.
Speaking of phase two, I think that maybe that's where I'm having a little bit of difficulty, because unlike Lou, I believe that number four is low-hanging fruit. I think that it's been talked about for some time. I think it has generated, as probably your interviews have indicated, a significant level of interest in a convention, you know, center. But for me, my comments aren't in opposition, but rather to state that I think it's in the wrong location. And so I'm not real sure what we're supposed to be doing as council in terms of our input into this process, you know, because it isn't that I don't support the idea as being, you know, a catalyst-level, you know, initiative that can be accomplished. I just, you know, I have a difference of opinion on location.
Well, if I could ask a question about location, you feel it should be somewhere else in the downtown, or that it's more appropriate not in the downtown?
I think it's most appropriate on the dual highway at the Venice Inn property. I just do. I think that's the gateway into our downtown.
Three blocks down the street, yeah.
And I think that it spurns development of a private nature on the hospital property, which is what I would prefer over, again, a vacant untaxed park to maintain. I just-
But a hotel would be taxed. I mean, a conference center would be taxed.
Which is not located on that property.
Oh, yes, it is. This is all hospital property.
All of this is hospital-
Right, in this smaller area.
No, everything we're showing here is hospital-
But not in the green, number five, Regional Heritage Park.
Right. Well, I just want to be clear, all of the parcels that we're showing, buildings on there, are currently owned by the hospital.
Understand. One through four.
Yeah, all of them are. Okay, yeah, yeah. Let me suggest, and I'll have to talk to Kathy about this, but I think we could, in the course of the analysis, perhaps diversify the site here, and we could also take a look at how much of the, that area that's shown in green is necessary to really have an effective heritage site, and if others of it could ultimately be developed in other ways. So we could look at those variants in the course of looking at that.
Understand. That doesn't change the difference of opinion I have on location for that type of amendment.
No, but I'm saying, we could also look at the site, the Venice site also.
I think that's a key question, is it feasible to redevelop a current hotel into an upscale, upper upscale or conference center?
Well, it's more a question of do you bulldoze it and put something new there, but that's-
Yeah, that would happen.
I think we could look at both opportunities. I think that would be a variant that would be easily handled. The other question I would ask, as I heard another of your comments, Councilman, within the item number five, we're dealing with the blocks where the proposed parking facility, the parking garage, I believe, has been identified as a need. I believe that if this is going to be looked feasibly, we certainly have to incorporate parking demands here and take a look at the question of how all the parking needs are going to be met within the context of this. I believe there's been some analysis done already of the parking, of a parking facility allocation.
In a major parking consultant study, which said you shouldn't build a parking garage on speculation, you should link it with another development.
Right, I understand that, but it seems to me that we could, and it would be, I think, essential if we're going to look at number five properly, to make sure we incorporate that element into this, whatever's known by that, into the analysis. So I clearly hear that comment, and I think it's an appropriate one, and we'll try to modify to handle that also.
I just look at the expansion of the court system, the effort to expand the university, the effort here to expand the Maryland Theater, the discussion of expanding the Board of Education's footprint in this block, and the reality that that parking lot of the Columbia Bank is in higher demand than any other parking area in our entire urban core, at a rate much higher than what we charge in the rest of our urban core.
Well, and I will say that the lofts that we're proposing to look at along Antietam is going to generate a parking demand also that can't be handled on those properties. So, yes, let us, I would concur that that's a piece we need to look at within this, and we'll fold that into.
Mr. Brubaker.
Well, to start on one that's been mentioned several times, that when you, when we had discussed this previously, I said I was concerned with using the whole hospital site as a park where the actual hospital was. And you, in your presentation, said all are part of the site. So that's-
Right.
That's a piece we'll look at. That's a piece that I, that they're going to look at, and I don't think it's, they can say it's worth four to five million all they want. I'm not buying that for a minute.
That's the government purchase price.
Well, not my government purchase price.
Right, I understand.
On number one, the strategy for new office development and recruitment, I want to emphasize that word, and recruitment, because I think, you know, and they put it in there, we changed the title around some, I think to make it a little more accurate, but recruitment was in their original thing, and we need that as guidance for all of us, staff and elected officials, as to how to get into the market, not just for that type of facility so that we can get something downtown, feet on the street and that sort of thing. So, and I also want to say for the public, this was not meant to address every single issue or perceived issue downtown. It was meant to select some projects and some efforts and programs that can be done, that we can work on, that might help address some of the other problems, but in no way is it meant to address, you know, everything real or perceived that is going on problematic downtown.
That's a good point. Thank you all very much. Well, and just to be clear, so moving forward, it sounds like there are no real objections to moving forward with exploring the, what's being proposed here today. So I think we want to move forward and look forward to the next steps in the process.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I do want to mention that we've had a couple of changes in our agenda. We have two councilmembers who need to leave by 6:30, so we've adjusted our agenda for this evening. Items, we also have a sick finance director, we hope she gets better soon. So numbers four, five, and seven will be postponed, so the budget review, the sheriff and the chief addressing drug use and treatment in the community, and nonprofit housing discussion for mayor and council, all those items will be moved to a later date. And we're going to continue with items three and six. So right now, we'll have-
Three and six or three and seven?
Our planning director come up?
Three and six.
Three and six.
Three and six. So four, five, and seven will be postponed.
I got you. Four, five, and seven.
Four, five, and seven will be postponed. Ms. Marr, take it away.
Yes. I was already taking a back row seat, I thought three was also postponed. Glad to hear it's not. We're here because staff is working on a package of text amendments to address issues that we've been studying that we feel are not compatible with our efforts to build a quality of life downtown that is attractive to residents and patrons of the arts, culture, education, entertainment enterprises that we're recruiting and nurturing in the downtown. We believe if these issues that we've been looking at remain unchecked, it could jeopardize public and private investment made to implement our vision of an economically viable regional A and E district downtown and hamper our efforts to attract new investment enterprises that are compatible with this vision. We've also learned through the Urban Partners' public input process, they heard a lot of issues revolving around negative quality of life, and many of the comments were associated with high concentrations of low-income housing, social service agencies, and the perception that the downtown is not safe. So these are, the whole quality of life is an issue that keeps coming up and coming up. And so what we're looking at are some amendments to the zoning ordinance, which is a reason- And so what we're looking at are some amendments to the zoning ordinance, which is a reasonable and expected use of our police powers to protect the quality of life and public and private investment to implement your long-range plans. In the past 10 years, $72 million has been spent in the downtown implementing our plans, spent by the private and the public sector. Some examples are USMH, Bispa, the library expansion, University Plaza, the A and E district parking deck, the sidewalk enhancement projects to make outdoor dining areas, the Academy Theater, acquisition projects by the public sector and the private sector removing blight and putting active things back in, such as at 140 South Potomac Street, 41 North Potomac Street, city's recent acquisitions of 60 West Washington Street, 4353 West Washington Street, 170 West Washington Street, just on and on and on, efforts to implement our long-range plan goals. And so how will we initiate the protection of this vision? The amendments are intended to protect the investments by developing appropriate controls and measures that encourage activity that supports our long-range plan and deters activity that are counter to the quality of life we are trying to build and discourages or in some cases repels people from coming downtown to dine, shop, take classes, go to the library, attend events, et cetera. Staff are looking at a number of strategies to address these issues, including things such as encouragement of storefront users with higher foot traffic, prevention of uses that draw clientele or create an image that discourage people from coming downtown. We're here before you today because we feel that there's an immediate issue that we need to take action on to protect our efforts by imposing a temporary moratorium on a land use category that is particularly problematic for the city center in the very near term. This category is the ambulatory healthcare services, a category, broad category that covers medical and psychiatric outpatient enterprises. I did a check-through of our records, and there's approximately 14 of such enterprises in the city center mixed-use zoning district. We've received complaints from the business community on two such enterprises having clientele that gather in the vicinity of entrances to their facilities and intimidate or discourage patrons from coming downtown to conduct business, dine, shop, et cetera. City staff have observed disruptive behavior by groups of clientele gathering at these enterprises. Public safety and emergency personnel are called frequently to respond to issues at these particular enterprises. The immediate issue of concern for us is that two of these ambulatory healthcare service enterprises with a history of complaints and calls for service have indicated an intent to relocate and/or expand their enterprises downtown and are looking at real estate options very near to the public square. We are especially troubled at the prospect of locating groups of clientele exhibiting behavioral issues in close proximity to the square because the square is traversed daily by youth who are attending the Barker-Inham School for the Arts, the City Ballet School, Evolution Rock School, which is now located in the square. Patrons of the Maryland Theater and the restaurants travel through the square to and from public parking facilities. Travelers in our community are directed to the square for the visitor's center. These are all concerns for us. And so the proposed solution is to pass an emergency ordinance for a nine-month moratorium on new and expansions of existing ambulatory healthcare services in the city center mixed-use zoning district. Currently, ambulatory healthcare services are permitted in all zoning districts except the almost nearly residential zones. So all of the commercial zones, all the industrial zones, and our mixed-use zones, you can have this use. This is proposing a temporary moratorium only in the CCMU. The proposed moratorium will provide the city time to develop amendments to the Land Managed Code to appropriately address the issues and concerns cited in this presentation as well as other issues that are adversely affecting the downtown. We are already working on the potential text amendment, so this is in process. It's just the moratorium just gives us time to get the process going because it takes a while. The whole required public review process for amendments takes a while.
And the emergency nature is the fact that we know of at least two of these agencies who want to expand or are actively pursuing expansion.
Right. So what we're proposing, if we were to pursue this moratorium, is to have a public hearing on April 22nd, then on April 29th, an opportunity for mayor and council to vote on introduction and adoption of the emergency ordinance. It would become effective on May 2nd, and then over, we're anticipating this spring having amendment package go into the planning commission. So this is moving along. The emergency moratorium or the emergency ordinance for the moratorium gives us a chance for that process to carry through and protect our interests.
Great effort.
When you note there are 14 of these types of defined ambulatory healthcare services facilities in our city center, I'm assuming that that does not include those institutions which provide emergency shelter services, like, or in residency, temporary sheltering services. I'm assuming it doesn't include those.
Right, right.
And if you were to add that number, I would imagine you would at least double the 14 within the defined area. And for me, and I've said this before, and I feel comfortable in speaking about this issue frankly, is not a desire not to have these types of social service facilities, which are necessary within any community, but rather if there are, to be such facilities that they operate in a manner that is as responsible as we would expect of any other type of residential facility within our community or housing unit or apartment or home or whatever you want to look at. And so I think that your last paragraph about, you know, looking at a package of legislative actions is most important because, let's face it, we get the reports, you know, and when I hear of an individual that's following young ladies from corner to corner right here on the 100 block of Franklin and Potomac, that happens to be housed at, you know, Turning Point or Reach, in that particular case, that's not appropriate. That's not safe. It's not conducive to the activities that we want citizens to experience in our downtown. And when we receive our Board of Zoning Appeals case material from staff, and we read where one facility, you know, is allowing services for individuals that may have a history of violent, you know, offensive background, that's not appropriate, you know, to take lightly on the impact that that may have in the surrounding neighborhood in the urban core. And so I think that, you know, we talk a good bit, and folks in general talk a good bit about, you know, the impact that, you know, housing in general has on urban core, from rentals to subsidized to what have you. But I think that we need to address this issue as directly as we possibly can. And a good example of that is we sat here a few weeks back when there was a gentleman, Mr. Carmichael, that sat here and explained, "I'm going to buy the Alexander House. You know, I know that you're aware of the conditions in which, you know, it is operated currently. I plan to change those conditions." And I think we all looked at him, I certainly did, with a bit of speculation and hesitation and reluctance, because we haven't had those types of experiences where the manager of properties, you know, of that magnitude of impact to the community are going, you know, to do exactly what they sat there and said they were going to do. And I think his email today clearly indicated that his intention is to do so. And so I think that begs exactly that question, you know, of what should we be doing at a legislative level to ensure that same type of active responsibility occurs?
So you support this effort?
Yeah, but I think it's just not this, it's important to note that it's not just this single effort.
Oh, sure.
You know what I mean?
I think the emergent, again, the emergency nature is the fact that we know that at least two who are actively pursuing expansion, and we don't want that to happen.
And as...
And the whole package of amendments to address all of the various uses that are detrimental, I think, are to be examined.
As I've commented, every time we get information on one of these Board of Zoning Appeals initiatives in any part of our, whether it's the urban core or out in our neighborhoods, to me, there is an emergency every time that has required some type of legislative review, and so I think this is long overdue.
Agreed with your question.
Kathy, this is a good piece of work. It allows us to take the fate of the city and put it in our hands. So, thank you.
It's a good piece of work by my staff researching this.
Everybody's done a good piece of work on it.
Mr. Brubaker?
Yes, and I emphasize, there are other zones in the city that allow us, as Kathy pointed out, there will remain...
All but the strictly residential.
Right. There remain zones with lots of acreage and structures that these facilities are allowed, so we're not banning them. And I also want to thank for the very thorough presentation and thorough research.
Ms. Nye?
You know where I'm at, Kathy. I've preached and preached and preached, and now something's finally, hopefully, going to happen. And as far as moving them, I'd like to see them completely out of the city of Hagerstown because that's why we've got the problem that we have. We continue to draw from other communities in, and we locate them right here. And I don't care if it's downtown or on the outskirts. We still have them. As long as they can get to these facilities, we're going to continue to have them. This is the place to be. And you know how I feel, Kathy. You always do a good job.
Sounds like we have a pretty clear consensus for support then, and I, again, I thank you for your efforts on this. It's well done.
Great, thank you. So we'll be back on the 22nd.
Kathy, congratulations on UConn.
Oh, thank you. Yes.
I heard a wild room.
She answered twin titles.
I heard a wild room. I was with you.
You had to add that in there, huh?
That's right. Had to watch tonight.
All right. Well, the last item is just really an update on police housing incentives. This is something we had talked about before, so we'll have the chief come up and talk about that. We're sorry we didn't do the presentation with you and the sheriff tonight, but we look forward to that presentation in the future.
Certainly. Thank you for having me. I just want to give the council an update and ask for an expansion of our police housing incentive program. When we started this about a year ago, we had about four or five officers that were currently living in the city. And so we had some discussion at that point to start a monthly housing allowance to encourage more officers to move into the city. So I'm happy to report that that has happened. And back about a year ago when we talked about this, we talked, how much are we going to, how much are we going to do? And we even had some discussion about maybe increasing the dollar amount based on where you lived to support some efforts that the city was having. So we decided to start with $100 a month. There was some discussion of $200 a month a year ago, but we thought we'll just take some steps and see what $100 does for us. And to report, that has worked very well. We currently have 15 officers that are living in the city. So we've taken advantage of our recruiting efforts, and about half of the new officers that we've hired in the last year have decided to move into the city. So, and that has taken place at the recruiting point. One thing we missed back then was expanding it to cover the trainees in the academy. We talked about police officers, but we forgot to delineate the actual academy recruits. So I'm here to ask that we expand the program to include our academy recruits. These are the ones that they're relocating to our area to go through a six-month academy, so they're renting an apartment one time. I'd like them to rent that in the city. So that'd be the first bullet point to ask is, can we expand this program to include the police officer trainees that are in the academy? Not the cadets, just the trainees in the academy. And then the second thing is, do we increase it as far as where they live? So I worked with Economic Development and Human Resources, John and Karen, and we come up with a map that's attached here. And basically, we have three different zones. We have $100 zone around the entire city, and then as you move towards the center, the blue zone in the map is $200 a month, and then in the immediate downtown, the yellow area would be $300 a month. Now, the police program, to remind you, is an ongoing program. There's no guarantee it's going to run forever, but council has decided not to put a sunset on it. It just continues. And so that has also helped encourage, I think, some of the officers to move in. Currently, I have one officer that's living in the blue zone, which is good to see. They moved in that area. And I don't have anybody in the yellow area, which is the downtown. So it's, even though we're looking at $300 a month is what I would propose to council to consider, I don't have anybody taking advantage of that yet, but we're hoping that that would, of course, spur a police car to show up downtown.
I think it's a great idea, and I think we have one landlord that with this incentive would almost be free, almost be free rented.
Yeah, we do. We've had some interest there, absolutely.
I think it's a great idea. I've long thought that this type of a process is one of the most cost-effective ways to accomplish multiple goals at once.
Couple of questions to clarity.
Yes.
How do we determine whether, I mean, I assume somebody just like living at home is not eligible? Is that, or are there any criteria that, for establishing that they're eligible, other than they're simply resident in that area? They simply live there. Let's say they live with their parents or something like that.
Well, we don't even have an example like that, but if they would choose to continue to live in the city with their parents, that could, they could still qualify. The point is that we would end up with a police car in front of their house in the neighborhood.
The cruiser, the cruiser is the important...
That was my next question is that they...
And I didn't cover that, but yeah, we're going to...
My next question was, do they automatically get a take-home car when they live in the city? Is it automatic or is there any process?
It's automatic. They need to finish the police academy, so they have a right to...
Right, a right to have a car, sure.
Sure. So once they're completed their training, yes, they can get a take-home car.
And park it on the street, hopefully.
Yes, yeah.
Not just a dummy car, it's a car that somebody actually lives there. Yeah.
I just need to be clear. Once the program is initiated for an individual, how long does it continue?
Well, currently...
It's not just a one-year program.
It's not a one-year program.
It lasts as long as we're willing to find the funds for it.
That's correct. And this runs independent of the program for professionals that Economic Development currently has, which is...
In addition to the other downtown residency initiatives.
Yes, and we do have another member of our department, actually, that's taken advantage of that program, is not a police officer, but chose to live in the downtown and then found out that it's that $150 a month incentive is what you're talking about, council member, for one year it runs. And that would actually layer on top of this. So in essence, if you chose to live downtown and you lived actually not only within the yellow zone in the downtown, but also within the economic development zone, you could actually get $450 a month for one year, and then it would lower down to $300 a month, continuing after that. There are some landlords that are offering some incentives, some matching incentives for the police to get them into their buildings. And so I'm kind of encouraged that we have 15 that have chose to move into the city. We, and I'm hoping that this can, I think, as all of us are, that would attract them closer to the city center.
$3,600 a year is a pretty good savings.
It certainly is. We should publicize, make sure landlord associations and others are aware of this so that, because they're often willing to make offers as well, as Lou indicated. We know of one, so. So a police officer could, we choose to fund this program, could live his, his whole career, he could be, his rent could be subsidized.
So long as the council continues to fund the program?
Somewhere around $100,000.
As long as the council says, yeah.
Well, that's a pretty good savings over the years.
And yet, it's almost being free if they act with the right landlord.
Right.
So do we need to do anything as it applies to that specific landlord's request?
Not that I'm aware of.
In terms of a match?
All we gotta do is approve this policy.
We approve the policy.
Yeah, approve the city program, and that stuff that the landlords did deal with their own incentives.
Right.
But I would like to think that we would certainly encourage landlords to let us know so that we could be a repository for them if they're willing to match things.
Well, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, we'll keep a list for sure.
We'd certainly like to work with them to make sure our officers and these folks know
that these landlords may be willing to do matching incentives.
All right. I'm sure we could coordinate that with our Human Resources Department as new employees are learning about the programs and even just like the other employee that joined our department that was not a police officer, took advantage of the downtown program that's currently in effect. I think that's well underutilized to get professionals downtown.
Believe me, the individual you had dinner with last night would have utilized it, had he known about it.
... Community development...
You need community development to help you on that.
Because they have the register of all the landlords.
The outreach, yes.
Yeah, that, for extra, for internal human resources, for external, I'd say, housing community development.
We'll get the word out through.
And on the city center program, just to clarify, you asked us to come back on that one to look at, or restructure that in some way, the third bullet point, the chief memo. So, we'll be back.
Sounds great. Good job, Steve.
Okay. Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
So, we'll put this on for the 29th.
For approval. Okay. And just so everybody knows, because we're not talking about the budget tonight, we do have some discussions about the budget upcoming. Monday, April 21st, from 4:30 to 6:30, we'll have a special meeting here to only discuss the budget. We'll be discussing it to some degree at our work session on the 22nd. And then, on Tuesday, the 29th, is the evening of our regular session at 7:00 PM. So, prior to that, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, we'll also be discussing the budget. So, for folks who are planning ahead, we're still on track to have our budget hearing on May 13th, and then scheduled for adoption on the 27th. So, just so everyone knows where we're at with that. And reminder that we're not going to be meeting next week. And if there's nothing else, then we'll move into city administrator comments.
Just to say, thank you for moving forward with the Urban Partners Project. I think we've got something good going on there, and I think we'll get some good results back to the mayor and council in June.
All right. Council comments. Mr. Metzenner, we'll start with you.
I would just like to really commend all of the various city departments, obviously the fire department, but it wasn't just the fire department, there's also City Light, there's also the police department. There are also our, Mr. Zimmerman and others who appeared down at the fire on Franklin It, it's a horrible thing when we have people die, but to see the professionalism of our employees is never surprising, having been here as long as I have. And as it relates to our firefighters, you know, there's one thing that should be well-understood. There are two things in the world with, with people, and one of them is trying to deal with their employment vis-à-vis our union negotiations. And those same people who push and pull with us are the same people who answer that fire call. And one thing is absolutely for sure, whether it's our police department, our IBW people, our fire department, any of these folks, it doesn't make any difference where our union negotiations are. When the call comes, they're there, and they do the job, and they risk their lives at all the levels, everybody in the city, whether they're out piling snow and shoveling snow, or they're responding to an armed robbery or fire. And they just need to be commended, and I wanted to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nye?
He's pretty much said it.
It was well said.
Yes, it was.
Mr. Munson?
I went to see Wizard of Oz last, last Friday down at the Maryland Theater, put on by the Barbara Ingram School, and it was super. Indeed, I sat near Councilwoman Nye's husband and daughter.
I was spending granddaughter.
Granddaughter, yeah. Who was, I understand, going to be a student at Barbara Ingram. Congratulations on that.
I'll be going to see it this Friday.
You're gonna enjoy it, Mayor.
Great. Mr. Alshire?
I don't, unfortunately, have the ability to get out of the house that much. So, I get to sit home and, yeah, I get to sit home and read the paper. And I swore that I wasn't gonna comment on this, but I'm going to anyway. March 22nd, there was an editorial, I think from the Herald editorial board, that said, "We agree with Mayor Geisberg's remarks that folks should stop hating on the city," and that he's right to ask the community to put a lid on the negativity. And then, this weekend, there's another editorial by the same editorial board that states the city is a suburban city with astounding, plummeting tax, property tax values. And I just, I'm not real sure whether there's some bipolarism going on there, but I, I just, I don't understand. And any citizen that reads this editorial and is dumb enough to believe that the reason we're facing an 11-cent tax increase is because we didn't build a stadium, probably shouldn't be reading to begin with. That's all I'll say about the article.
All right. Mr. Brubaker?
Okay. It's, it's not my turn for the Herald Mail. Thank you, Kristen, and thank you, Lou, for your remarks. I do want to say, because people may get a little confused, there was a presentation by an architect to the Chamber of Commerce and other guests this morning at the library. And it was more an update on the latest, I would say, many of the latest sort of concepts in urban design, is the way I would put it. It wasn't so much Hagerstown-specific, it was more a general treatise on, on things that are happening all over the world, really. The first time Hagerstown's ever been compared to Paris, I gotta say. That was pretty interesting. But, so, it, it, but it wasn't much about any places or specific projects in Hagerstown other than, here's, here's a lot of, you know, ideas that are happening all over the world that we might want to think about.
Trends and new urbanism.
Complete streets and things like that, yeah.
Quadic centers?
No. No, they're not getting in that deep. They're not getting in that deep.
Well, I do, I do want to, again, reiterate what Councilmember Metzenner said about the firefighters. I mean, it was heartening to see them at work, so many of them trying to put out that fire and protect life and property. Other than that, I do want to thank staff also for all the hard work they do in every department, but especially as we move forward with Urban Partners and the work that we're doing there. It's very exciting to me to think of all the potential and possibilities and the continuation of building community and gathering that stakeholder feedback and engaging those stakeholders to really be stakeholders, which is to, you know, participate in the revitalization and not just sit back and wait for the city to do everything. So, I look forward to the weeks and months to come. It'll be exciting, like I said, and if no one else has anything else, we will be adjourned. Thank you. Safe travels.